Please get up and be quiet. You have swampy diva.
Oh, I know what you want. The big box of money Mr. Howell gave me? I'll go get it for you.
Hold it! Everyone, please, putting hands in air.
He means put your hands up.
We all know what he means, Gilligan.
They want my box of money, skipper.
Do you gentlemen want your own boxes of money? Uh, what denominations do you prefer?
Not interested in money.
Good heavens, they must be mad men.
We take what we want.
Wait a minute, that's my good luck charm.
Lucky for us.
If you give that to our government, we get metal.
Hold it. I'll take that. FBI.
Oh, good.
If you folks don't mind, we'll take these two along with us. Will somebody tell us what this is all about?
Can I have my good luck charm back?
In due time. Uh, thanks to you, we captured these guys. I want you to know that the government is greatly in your debt.
Why not? The government's greatly in debt, so everyone else too.
Let's go.
Can we get your hero?
You're a pervert, damn it! Okay, heroes, get ready to cast off.
Aye aye, sir.
Okay, little buddy, I'll come and get you. Hang on. I can't understand it, Gilligan.
Understand what, skipper?
Well, I set our course for that little island just off the coast.
Right.
Whoa, it's been hours now. We should be heading straight out to sea. Listen, the compass was wrong.
The compass can't be wrong, I just cleaned it before we left.
You cleaned it?
Yeah, it's a good thing I did. It was really dirty when I got in there, there was a little piece of metal jammed in the bottom. I took it out there, threw it away, and I polished that copper.
Gilligan, that was the magnet. That's what controls the needle that I stare by. Gilligan! Now that we've been enough to take any chances, I better start heading back.
Aye aye, sir.
I'll steer by the sun for a while.
What sun?
What do we do now?
Maybe we can circle the storm. We'll go west until... Backing down the hatches.
Backing down the hatches!
Send down an SOS.
Send down an SOS. How do you smell that?
Watch out!
Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, April 21st. I would like to call a meeting to order. And I would like to start by congratulating, uh, Jeanie Carpenter, Eric Poole, and Darlene Grineer for winning reelection. And item three is administer all staff office. No one has requested, I think everybody signed them and we're all done. So, that's all set. And then item four is roll call, please.
Bollig?
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Poole? Grineer?
Here.
Staton?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Thank you. Item five is confirmation of appointments.
I'm here.
Carpenter.
Oh, I'm sorry. I marked somebody down twice then. It's like I had six marked.
She won reelection too.
Yeah. Sorry about that. So, item five, confirmation of appointments. The first item A is announcement of my appointments as follows. Uh, Finance, Building and Facilities Committee. Jerry Bollig will chair that with Jeff Boudreaux and Jeanie Carpenter. Personnel and Public Safety. Jeanie Carpenter chairs that with Doug Brethauer and Jerry Bollig. Public Works and Utilities is chaired by Eric Poole with Jeff Boudreaux and Doug Brethauer. Plan Commission Rep from the Village Board is Jeanie Carpenter. Library Board Rep from Village Board is Darlene Grineer. Item six is Community Development Authority. That is not going to be done at this time. Historic Preservation Commission. Our representative is Doug Brethauer. Park Board. Doug Brethauer is the representative there. Zoning Board of Appeals is Jerry Bollig. And Cable TV Committee is Jeff Boudreaux. At this time, I would take nominations for appointment of Vice President.
I'll nominate Jerry.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further nominations? So we can just vote on that as is, right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Jerry.
Thanks.
I plan on being gone a lot in the next couple of years. Okay, so item C is Board Presidents' Recommended Appointments to Committees, Commissions, and Boards. These require board approval. I'll go through all of these and then we'll vote on them as a group when I'm done. So, the motion would be to approve the appointments on Agenda Items C-1 through C-15 excluding C-3 and C-14. So I'll read through those and then we'll look for the motion. Uh, for the Plan Commission, Scott Meyer, three-year term. Eric Smithback is an alternate for a one-year term. Library Board, reappointments, Brian Bustler, Mary Stats, and Mary Jane Nesbit. Those are three-year terms. Item three is the Community Development Authority that is tabled. Item four, Historic Preservation Commission. Rob Keynes as an alternate. Michael Kleisch as an ad hoc member as a building inspector. Those are one-year terms. And then Randy Gleish, Julia Myers, and Deborah Miners as three-year terms. Police Board of Commission, Jim Myler for a five-year term. Park Board, you have the youth position, John Hermus, one-year term, and Dan Olson, three-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals, John Dyninger, Dennis Staskel, and Douglas Tucker. Those are two-year terms. Board of Review. Jerry Bollig, Eric Poole, Darlene Grineer, Jeanie Carpenter, and Peggy Hague. Those are all one-year terms. Cable TV Committee, Karen Taylor who's the vice chair, Steve Scales. Kermit Trask who's Secretary Treasurer, John Bonzaville who's chair. Jeanie Knutson who is chamber rep and Liz Harlow Program Coordinator. Those are one-year terms. Fire EMS Commission, Darlene Grineer and Jeff Boudreaux. Fire EMS Joint Board, Mark Severson and Pamela Hines. Oregon Council on Aging, Darlene Grineer, one-year term. Village School District Cooperation Committee, Darlene Grineer and Mike Grace. Those are one-year terms. Item 14 is tabled. That's appointment as a member of the O.Kil Advisor Committee and O.Kil Master Plan Committee. And then, other one-year appointments requiring board approval are as follows. Village Attorney, Matt Dregney and Richard Eadie, Stafford Rosenbaum. Prosecution Attorney, Tim Spear-Schneider. Cemetery Superintendent and Sexton, Mark Bealow. Forester and Week Commissioner, Mark Bealow. Building Inspector, Mike Kleisch. Zoning Administrator, Mark Bealow. And Zoning Administrator Alternate, Mike Kleisch.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And that's excluding Items 3 and 14 as indicated.
Yes.
Any questions or discussion?
John Hermus, youth position on the Parks Board. Has he been approached if he wants to continue on or not?
Well, I'm assuming he'll, he'll serve out the semester and then we'll have to find somebody new once he goes to college. And, and so what we do with these is that we, if the board approves the motion, we contact people. And if they do not want to serve, then, then we bring that back to the board. Versus, in the past, we used to try to contact everyone before the meetings. It was, it was, in trying to get them to respond by them. So, if John decides not to, for example, serve, then I'll bring that back to the board for discussion.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. But I do anticipate him, but I know, I know he's a senior, that he probably will get off probably at the end of semester.
Yeah, that's a good question and a good clarification. We tried to contact him before and it was hard to get this done before the meeting. So we had a bunch of things we couldn't approve. We had to come back and do it. So this way, they're all done. If somebody doesn't want to serve, then we, we go back.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments?
I have a trivial question about Mark's role as Village Sexton. What is the, what are the functions of a Sexton? Anybody know? I mean, I could go home and research that myself tonight, but I thought maybe somebody would know.
Well, I mean, he, he is the person who, um, for generally explanation oversees the cemetery.
Okay. I'll report on that some other time.
Okay.
I'll, I'll research it.
Okay.
Please do.
So how is that different?
Please do.
To pretend it.
I, yeah, it's like, you know, it's an old, old term.
It is an old term, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've heard it.
That's appropriate.
I will tell, I will, I won't pass those comments on to Mark tomorrow.
Any, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, Designation of Official Newspaper, Legal Posting Areas, and Financial Institution and Depositories. Uh, first is approving the Oregon Observer as the village's official newspaper. Do we do these all at once? We should do it separate.
I think separately.
Okay, so item A first. Need a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Carries. Item B, Designating Legal Posting Areas as Village Hall, the Library, and Post Office?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Board Action Adopting Resolution Number 15-02, Designation of Financial Institutions and Depositories and Authorized Account Signers?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I noticed in the packet there were a number of banks designated as depositories. Just wondering if there's a reason why one bank is chosen over another? I'm just, I've always been curious about that.
So this is where, this is where we place our CDs mainly. And we, we do some, we do checking too, but mainly these are, these are where we have our investments. And so Lisa and I will, uh, contact, mainly Lisa, banks and, and trying to get the best CD rates. And so we do, we, we put people on, we put banks on this list and take them off at certain times of the year. We, we just try to look for the best CD rate we can.
I see. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else? So we have a motion second on Resolution 15-02. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Discussion Possible Action, Identity Theft Prevention Program for 2015. Any comments on that, Mike?
This is something that we do on a annual basis, recommended by the auditors.
It was, hope the information was in our packet.
So I'll move to adopted as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, General Discussion Regarding Village Matters. Item A, League of Wisconsin Municipalities Seminar. Information in our packet if anyone would like to attend that. And then, a copy of the village's Code of Ethics in our packet and also at our place as a reminder. Everyone on this list, the village board, all boards and commissions will receive this also as reminders to what that involves. So, we did that several years ago. Are there any questions on that? And item eight would be a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion carries.